Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of March 17, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this. Therefore, seating in the council chambers is limited. At this time, Councilmember Gray will be offering the invocation, and following the invocation, Councilmember Arias will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand?
Dear Heavenly Father, we invite you into our presence tonight as we do the business of the people. We thank you for the privilege to live in a country that embraces freedom and allows for the average citizen to participate in our democratic process. We thank you for all those who are in authority, from our president to our local officials, and we ask that you would give us your wisdom to guide our nation and our city according to your will. We thank you for our armed forces and first responders, and ask that you keep them from harm's way as they continue to protect us. We also ask for your wisdom and blessing upon our city staff as they make important decisions that affect every citizen in Bakersfield. We pray your blessing over our school system, administrators, teachers, and board members that guide our children's futures, and ask that you keep our precious children in your care. We also pray over every small business and our industries of oil and agriculture and others that provide well for our citizens and fuel our economy. We bless our nonprofits and those with generous hearts that give of their time and talent to provide for those in our community that need a hand up. As your servants and according to your word, you require us to do three things: to do what is right, to love mercy, and to walk humbly before you. May each one of us here tonight, whether we be an elected official, a staff member, or a private citizen, operate in this manner to be a light to our community. And finally, as a city, may we honor you by putting our trust in you so that the people of Bakersfield may ultimately live in peace with one another. In the precious name of Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed only during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions. And please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Public statements.
Thank you. This meeting has limited public access, therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email and by phone call. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. All statements will be given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. And if you're here to speak on the workshop items or on consent calendar public hearing items 9A or 9B, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation on those matters. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit, and please avoid... Sorry. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers at this time?
Mayor Go, we've received nine public speaker cards, all regarding separate subjects.
Thank you. And would you please call the first one?
The first public speaker this evening is Joanna Coronado.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Good evening, Mayor Go, council members. My name is Joanna Coronado, and I work with TDAH Associates. We attended the recent Transformative Climate Communities Meeting, also known as TCC, on March 11. During that meeting, we were informed that community members could submit their own projects. We would like to inform you that we submitted two projects to city staff. Both projects meet the TCC guidelines. The first project is the downtown Bakersfield Circulator Bus. The second project is the Fourth Street Active Transportation Corridor. We provided maps that illustrate the two projects, and we respectfully request for you to consider advancing these projects as TCC projects. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Coronado, next speaker, please.
Joaquin Valletta.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Joaquin Valletta, and I thank you all here, thank everybody back here, and you know what, making these things possible for us here. So, I like to climb, ride my bike, fall, tumble, roll down hills, especially within the Bluffs Hard Park, and this glass, big old shards of broken bottles just here and there. And of course, if there could just be a collective effort, I mean, I do my little thing with little bags and stuff sometimes, but there could be a collective effort to find those spots, you know, especially where people recreate a lot. Also, I noticed there's some parts of the highway, especially Highway 30, like if you're leaning towards Porterville, there's like the lane where you could, you know, I mean, the broken line where you could make a pass, and then there's like a hill not that far in the distance, and you're fine, and you're making your pass, and all of a sudden, you see headlights, like, oh, shoot, you know? You gotta kind of like slow down sometimes, get back in your lane, or go even faster trying to make the pass. I just feel like I've seen that. I've experienced it. I think that's an accident waiting to happen. So, just consideration, please, if maybe somebody could get out there, see all those spots, and move that broken line back some distance where it can make it safer. And I'm also in the across-street in the one-hour towing, I mean, a one-hour parking. So, if my car gets towed, if there could be some reprieve for the earlier meeting running late, JK LOL. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And next speaker, please. And thank you to all of you for having patience to wait for us. I know we started the meeting very late, and we just appreciate your patience.
Jennifer Van Alsteen.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Mayor Go, members of the council. My name's Jennifer Van Alsteen, V-A-N-A-L-S-T-E-I-N, formerly Jennifer Pitcher. I'm just here today actually speaking on behalf of myself, which I think might be the first time I've addressed your council for myself. I know I've talked to all of you for years now about efforts in Old Town Kern and to beautify it, and I just wanted to thank your council for putting more focus on this area of town, and I'm excited to be joining the hub and helping with various efforts in that area. We've done a lot of projects down there with murals on Luigi's and by Wool Growers. And Keep Bakersfield Beautiful just completed all of the electrical box murals in Old Town Kern. Looking forward to continued projects, continued efforts. I know that citizens from all over the city have a vested interest in this. When we were doing this project a couple of years ago, we raised over $30,000 pretty easily and didn't really have to try too hard, because I know the businesses and people from all of the wards are really invested in this area. When we started this project, I had the help of the late Mayor Hall, who gave some seed money for the project. So, just excited to see that it's gained momentum and gained a lot of your guys' support. So, I just wanted to say I appreciate it, and I'm excited to see what else we can do in this area. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alsteen, and thank you for your service on Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Next speaker, please.
Shannon Labarre.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Go, council members and city staff. My name is Shannon Labarre, and I am the owner of a downtown Bakersfield business called Purveyor Branding Company and a resident of East Bakersfield and vice-chair of the Hub of Bakersfield. Our board has come together to spur on efforts to build awareness for Old Town Kern, both from a brand development and community event side. We have been met with excitement and positivity as we've launched our efforts across social media and boots-on-the-ground marketing for our cause. Distinct locations such as Old Town Kern are what distinguish Bakersfield from any other suburban and mid-sized cities across the country. It's essential to our identity as a city that we both preserve and reinvent these areas. The businesses and property owners that have held on and even excelled as nearby buildings were vacated and fell into disrepair need extra support from the city. Yes, it'll be a line item on the budget, but the impact will be even more impressive. As a branding expert, I spend my days helping companies understand how they can connect to their customers and community. To do that, we work to understand how the identity of a person can be realized and transformed through the services or product a business provides. If people crave community and connection, we can position businesses to lean into that need, to build ways to bridge the connection gap and thus create a bond where customers become advocates and lifelong fans. Building an identity for a place like Bakersfield and Old Town Kern can create these lifelong fans and advocates that will impact this area for generations. In this last month, we've built a brand for the supporters of Old Town Kern to wear on their shirts, to put on their social media profiles, to share with their friends, and most importantly, sign on the line with a clear call to action. We've created buzz, noteworthy events, and excitement over an area that needs its identity validated and celebrated. The good news is that we've only just begun. In my past job, we'd have C-suite executives and important figures visit our Bakersfield office often. When it came to food and beverage, they didn't ask to go to a chain restaurant or something familiar to them. The answer was always the same: any restaurant in Old Town Kern will do. In fact, my interview was at Luigi's. It was the first time there is a Bakersfield transplant, and I just got how special that place was almost immediately. RC is a hard time with identity, and redefining and reclaiming is one of my missions in my daily work and through my service at the Hub of Bakersfield. We don't know the goodness that's under our noses, yet we won't give it up for anything. Through the revitalization of Old Town Kern, our hope is that our collective connection to OTK builds identity and inspires the legacy to continue and further impact to be made in that area that holds so much of our history. Those visitors already knew how good we have it, and I want our community to understand and celebrate it, too. I'm asking you on behalf of the Hub of Bakersfield and over 1,600 petition signers to set aside funds for this next fiscal year and each subsequent year to work on high-impact projects that will help revitalize Old Town Kern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labarre. Next speaker, please.
Rudi Patel.
Please introduce yourself.
Rudi Patel, I'm going to speak fast, so keep up. I'm tired of hearing WISPA, SEPA talking points parroted from the mouths of y'all, so here are some fun facts contradicting what y'all usually say. While WISPA and SEPA like to balloon job numbers, the Carbon Neutrality Study Synthesis Report breaks down all oil and gas extraction jobs, both white and blue collar, by county, and it finds a statewide total of only 7,696 jobs for the entire oil and gas extraction sector, and only 3,388 jobs in Kern County, top for the state. These jobs are almost all non-union, and the 2019 average blue-collar annual earnings were $55,642, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which California shows is not enough for one person sustaining a family, even in Kern County. California production has decreased gradually from its peak in 1986 by about 60%, and California oil tends to be dirtier, i.e., heavier and higher sulfur content, and more expensive to extract than most other places in the world with active extraction. There's been an increasing number of idle oil and gas wells in California, especially in Kern. These need to be safely plugged by the companies, and if not, the state then has to step in, which could lead to more than $5 billion shifting to taxpayers, when the company should be paying that, not taxpayers. If the state plugged just the state's current orphan, idle, and marginal wells, it would produce over 9,000 jobs over 10 years. That means more effective oil well remediation alone would create more jobs over the next 10 years than oil extraction, even if oil extraction's labor force didn't continue declining because of market forces or any new regulations. Also, you guys discussed economic diversification and job development as we move forward in the coming decade. For Kern County, like the state didn't just award the Center on Race, Poverty, and the Environment UC Merced, Kern County Community College District, and Bakersfield College millions of dollars in grant money to plan the transition for workers in Kern as the oil and gas industry becomes extinct in the coming decade, because no matter how much you can refuse to believe that, it's happening. Non-union blue-collar workers are already losing their jobs in Kern County. Continuing to support a dying industry and not acknowledging these issues hurts workers. So, to my city councilman, Bruce Freeman, you need to educate yourself, and Patty Gray, you said you wanted trade schools because our education system is poor? Great, take the $120 million you give to the police and give it to education, and put your money where your mouth is. I would like to read the remainder of the resolution for AB 1400, aka Medicare for All for California, aka a single-payer system for Californians. However, by this point, I'm running out of time. But a majority of Californians support a single-payer system, so I expect you all to introduce this resolution and pass it, especially Democratic city council members. Medicare for All would save 68,000 lives and also save taxpayers $450 billion with the average American family, seeing $2,400 in annual savings. So, if we can save lives and do it while saving money, why wouldn't we? In conclusion, y'all don't know what the [bleep] you're talking about, and you're [bleep] incompetent, and I just wish y'all would resign.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Next speaker, please.
Manuel Carizales.
Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Go, and all council members. My name's Manuel Carizales, State Focus Ministries. I just wanted to mention the CalVIP grant. I'm looking forward to the partnership with the city council members. I know that Vice Mayor Weir mentioned that, you know, we want to be put in the map, but we want to be put in the map for something good. As you know, we've had gang violence bust of the roof, broke the glass ceiling last year, and that's one thing that we want to do. We want to curb the violence, as well as drugs. And we've been doing this 31 years. Prior to that, I did 10 years in prison. I was hooked on heroin junior high school, grew up on Cottonwood and Felix, three different generations there, and so no one ever went to our neighborhood back then. But, as you prayed, it was the Lord that changed my life 31 years ago. We've been on a mission ever since. But I'm so excited to work with City Manager Chris H. Clegg and the other two CBOs and whoever else is going to be a part. And I just wanted to say thank you. It's long overdue, and I believe that we can curb the violence in our city like never before. I am an expert at what we do, but sometimes, as you know, it's a little bit difficult with just a couple of guys, but when you've got more of an army behind it, you're able to do more, especially when you have people that are in the council that are supporting it. Back in '07, we had did something that they said couldn't happen, that was Michael Rubio put together, the gang prevention, and I was one of the behind-the-scenes, put together the projects, the outreaches and everything that we did, and we broke the glass ceiling. But as funding went away, you know, things started happening. And before Alan Tandy left, City Manager, before he left at the state of the city, he mentioned that the top-rated problem, if you were there, if you remember, he said this: "Top-rated problem in our city was what? Gang violence." That's exactly what he said. And then I met with him to ask him again. He said that was our number-one problem. So, we have a problem in our city, but together we can change it. It's going to take a team effort to work together, to bring hope to the neighborhoods, to bring hope in different areas of the neighborhoods, the city. And I just wanted to let you know that my office will be contacting you guys to meet with you, to give you more of a strategic plan on what we're going to be doing. One thing that we're very good at is the outreaches. We're very, very, obviously, we're experts at doing outreaches to bring out families and neighborhoods, because when you bring them together, it takes a fear out of them. And that's what we'll be doing. And doing that, doing case management, mentoring, as we do with the kids, youth, and young adults, and even men and women. So, I wanted to give you my number, being that we're moving forward with the CalVIP grant, is 661-322-HOPE. That's 322-4673. And you can call our office, and I'll be calling you to really share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carizales. Next speaker, please.
Alice Hutchings.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Alice Hutchings.
My name's Angela Wilson.
We are the two parents of the three boys that were murdered or killed on Brimhall Road on New Year's Eve. Sorry. And we would like to request permission to have a memorial, and our first spot, of course, is at Brimhall Road, and the second spot, or if we can do both, is at Riverwalk Park, where our boys, whether they were supposed to or not, but they always hung out at Riverwalk, and that was their go-to place, and it was behind Bevmo. A bench, I think, would be appropriate over there, as we went walking there, and we saw plenty of benches along the walkway, and we would like to show Devin Atha, Timothy Wilson, and Andrew Ortiz reflected on the bench. Over there on Brimhall Road, if you don't want a bench, we would love it, because people keep going to the median spot where the tree is.
They keep crossing the street, and even in the dark with lights on, what is it? Flashlights. These kids, family members, are still crossing the street 11 o'clock at night just to be there where they last were. We just want to make it safer so these kids and the family can go there and...
Just have a moment of memorial there, and we can submit a drawing. We initially first set across angels or a bench. Riverwalk would be a bench.
We've tried to call, we've tried to email, we haven't gotten anywhere. That's why we're here, we're asking for, you know, your guidance, what we need to do to get this, you know, put into play. We just appreciate it.
The other thing is, I know mine, I said tree removal. I honestly know that there's been at least three murders that has happened with our medians and tree incidences. That's only off the top of my head. Well, I guess that would be four deaths. Five. Our three boys, one that was happened, I don't know, a few Saturdays, one that happened many years ago. I would suggest if we could do some kind of railing with some tree shrub, I mean, shrubbery or whatever, if we have to have some kind of median in the spot there without those trees, that was like an iron fist in the hole. When the car hit it, it totally made it go at 360. The tree stood so strong, strong roots.
Solid.
Solid roots. I know it beautifies Bakersfield, but we have trees on both sides, and I would just ask maybe for some, if not now with this place, maybe on the way forward when we go city planning on medians, to do a, I don't know, some kind of other partition other than just solid trees.
Leave your email.
And the email?
Leave your email.
Oh, my email, alice, A-L-I-C-E dot Hutchings, H-U-T-C-H-I-N-G-S, at ATT.net.
If you guys can get back to us with any sort of information or guidance, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss. And Councilmember Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, sorry for your loss, and I'd like staff to connect and to connect with me. I'm sure something can be done at Riverwalk Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
James Osborne.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is James Osborne, Vice President of Villagers Inc. We were here last month to gain some support on our initiative for education with our youth. As you may know, schools are starting to slowly go back into in-person, and we were faced with the difficult question of, are we going to close our doors and force our families to choose in-person studies? And after some conversations with our parents, a parent in particular who lost her home this past weekend to fire, we decided that we would keep our doors open at all costs. She lost her home due to faulty wiring, and we didn't expect to see her drop her kid off at our distance-learning program, but when she did, she said that our distance-learning program is the only thing that made her life feel normal at the moment. So, we had a reach out from the city manager's office one time within the month of us meeting, gave us a couple of contacts and some resources that we're already using, but other than that, it's been pretty quiet. We haven't really received any support since we last came here, and so we just wanted to bring it back up and make sure we haven't been forgotten about. As you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and that's the main reason why we call our organization Villagers Inc., because we truly believe that it takes a village to raise a child, and we can't do it alone. We've had one independent donor since we were here, as you guys know, and that's been about it. So, we're really trying to get some support rallied behind our initiative, behind our vision and our goals. We finally have a website now up and going. That is www.villagersinc.org. That's V-I-L-L-A-G-E-R-S-I-N-C dot O-R-G. And you can go through our website, see what we're doing, see our mission, see our progress. We've been working with every student in our program. We were shocked to find out that 90% of the high school students we work with were on a second to third-grade reading level. Those students are now at a fifth-grade reading level. We have increased our students' grades by 3%, so we are amazed with the work that we've been able to do within the short two months. We just, we need support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. And Madam Clerk, is there anybody else? I don't have any more cards. Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item A, Clean City Initiative, Clean Teams Update.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have a brief presentation to give a quick update on what we've done and also just to provide some public notice to the community about how to access these new resources, and I'll ask Mr. Chris Hewott to begin, and we'll have Nick Fiddler after that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Chris Hewott, City Manager's Office. I will be brief in my comments before turning it over to Nick this evening. This request to bring this presentation back to council was made by Councilmember Parlier a few months ago. Since that time, we have launched the Clean City Initiative, which Nick will cover in a bit more detail. I wanted to just quickly start off with kind of a high-level overview of this initiative and the city goals and PSVS priorities that it supports. So, again, this funding, the funding for the Clean City Initiative was included in the current year's budget, totaling about $1.5 million. And again, as you can see, this funding is supporting two city council goals, activities under both those goals, again, as well as three different priorities of the measure. So, we have quite a bit of information to share in a very short period of time, so I will turn it over to Mr. Fiddler, who will walk you through the details. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. First, I would like to thank Brianna Carrier and Joe Conroy for helping put together this presentation. They're both with the City Manager's Office, and I really appreciate their help on this. I'd like to step back and take you where we were and then move into where we're at now. Historically, a lot of the beautification process was accomplished through our Solid Waste Division and also through our KBB program, our Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, and our General Services Division. Through efforts of volunteers, grant funding, and sponsorships, we completed a lot of the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful programs and the beautification of the city of Bakersfield. We received grants from Caltrans and KernCog for our freeway cleanup programs, which we used Bakersfield Homeless Centers to go out and clean our freeways. Our General Services Division has a graffiti abatement program that we've had for several years. Our Keep Bakersfield Beautiful has been recognized nationwide for its efforts to keep our city clean. They've accomplished significant great American cleanups every year, having up to 9,000 people join in events in the past. Unfortunately, those events have been curtailed a little bit because of COVID, but we expect those to return. The Make a Difference Days that they've completed. And then the Adopt a Street Program. The Adopt a Street Program is a family or a business could adopt a section of roadway, and they are responsible to maintain that roadway at least two times a year. A very good program to keep your community clean. And then through Solid Waste, we have our Solid Waste Curbside Pickup. We allow for a couple of bulky items pickups three times, or once every three months. And then the bulky waste pickup, I'm sorry, same thing. And now moving into where we're at today through PSVS beautification efforts. Over the past couple of years, we've implemented a couple of rapid response teams or several rapid response teams, both in our Parks and Recreation Division and in our Code Enforcement Program. And then we have the Sela Environmental Inc. Biohazard Cleanup, which is focused mainly in the downtown area. And then our Downtown Street Ambassadors. And those have been going on for the past couple of years. Now, moving into the Clean City Initiative, which is more recent with this fiscal year, we've added to the Downtown Street Ambassadors, expanded their area, and then we started the Clean Cities Teams, which I'll discuss a little further later. And then we implemented a Clean City Drop-Off Events. For the Downtown Streets Ambassadors, as you can see, we kind of expanded the territory into Old Town Kern. Originally, it was in the main downtown area and then expanded into areas of the Old Town Kern. Their program is to gather litter and debris along the roadways and alleys, and then they service trash receptacles. In addition, they pressure wash and clean sidewalks, storefronts, and alleys. As you know, our downtown area is heavily traveled with pedestrians, and there's a lot of nightlife. So there's a lot of activity in the downtown area. So having this Downtown Streets Ambassadors every day is critical to keep that area clean. Oops, sorry, back up one. Can't see that. Oh, there you go, sorry. Eyes are going bad. Now, moving into our Clean Cities Team, we've hired two different companies. We have the California Highway Adoption Company and then the Bakersfield Homeless Center. These teams are able to help support our rapid response teams. They are focusing on streets and alleyways. They are available for special projects and cross-departmental support. By helping the rapid response teams, they allow those teams to focus on their priority areas, for instance, code enforcement issues or parks maintenance projects. These teams are dispatched citywide, they're not area-specific, and they monitor hotspots. The city has several hotspots throughout town, which are known spots where there's either illegal dumping or litter developing constantly. And then they, they report based off the mobile app. Each day, they come in, they're given assignments through my staff, my Solid Waste Division staff, and they're dispatched based on that. And if, and once they complete those tickets, then they go out and they do service some of the hotspots. Since starting this program in late January, you can see the numbers that we've totaled. 7,267 trash bags. These aren't your little tiny 13-gallon trash bags. These are 34, 33 to 45-gallon trash bags that they're collecting. When we talk about carts, those are 155 shopping carts that they've removed from the public right-of-way. That, in the past, has always been picked up by their, by code enforcement, our Police Department, our Recreation and Parks Department, and our Solid Waste Division. So having these crews pick them up allows our city crews to stay focused on their normal jobs. And then 276 mattresses. I think I've received requests from almost every one of you about mattresses in the public right-of-way. So it is a big problem. There are locations to dump these off, but it ends up that the public right-of-way, unfortunately, finds to be the most convenient place for people to drop these off. So that's been a huge burden lifted off of a lot of our crews, driving around and having to go pick these up because they're within a general area and they're able to spot those mattresses before actually you guys getting, having to make that call. So that's a good thing. My call volume has reduced significantly since January, which I really appreciate. And then couches, another thing. Those are big bulky items, people have hard time transporting, and they find it's easier just to dump it in an alleyway or a roadway that's quite quiet near their neighbor or in their neighborhood. And tires, 56. So miscellaneous items could be anywhere from a refrigerator to a barbecue. And there are all up and down, big-size items that don't fit inside a normal trash bag. Clean City Pop-Up Drop-Off Locations. This is to curb a city illegal dumping issue. A lot of people do not want to drive all the way out to Bena, our closest landfill, or even to the Shafter landfill. And they, again, go find a remote section of the city and they dump this materials alongside. By implementing these drop-off locations, it allows the public a short commute to drop off these large bulky items, or even just clean out some of their closets or their garage or the backyard and not have to drive all the way out to the Bena landfill. This was aimed to deter that illegal dumping. We're trying to do one to two events a month, and we do two sites per month. So we'll try to do one event in the northwest and the other event in the, on the same event, we'll have one location in the northwest and the other event in the southeast. And then we'll reverse that, and we'll do one event in the southwest and one site in the northeast. So trying to make it convenient for the public to actually drop off these materials. And by rotating it throughout the city, we're giving it more opportunity to the community to participate. We are also looking at changing locations. So far, we've held it at the same two locations for each event, but we are looking for other locations to implement to, again, help the ability for those communities to access these events. And you can see we've collected over 112 tons in the three-month period. So that's, it's actually really only a month and a half of operations because we stopped, our last one was the first month of, our first week of March. So this has been a huge success. We plan to continue it, and I think we've also seen less illegal dumping as well as a result of this. So as Chris had mentioned, there are easy ways to promote this or access this. And the City's App is the best tool for us, to implement, or to ask for, request for the Clean Cities Team to identify a location that you want us to go out and service. Because we do, we need the help of the citizens to identify these spots. We are going through and hitting the hotspots that we're aware of, but we can only cover so much of the city. So for us to be really effective, we need the citizens to help us find those other locations that are tucked in that we don't see. Through our Public Information Officer, we are putting out press releases and media events to show the locations of all the pop-up drop-offs. So we're hitting it pretty hard with social media, and it's been, it's been noticed within our Facebooks and accounts and everything, there's been a lot of activity on those. And continuing with media promotion, one of the pop-up drop-offs, you can see all the items that are available for the drop-off. We do get some people that are bringing in items that aren't eligible. But at first, we were taking them, but so we're using our media to kind of really inform citizens of what they can bring to those events. So future programming, I'm currently in the process of recruiting a Clean Cities Initiative Coordinator. We have made an offer to an individual. We are working with them through the onboarding process, and that will help us coordinate service requests. It will also help us to dispatch the teams to the appropriate locations and also help us document all the successes that we've had. It's a big effort, and reporting is key. Obviously, we're utilizing PSVS funds, and we want to show what the citizens are paying or getting for what they pay for. And to date, it's amazing the amount of material that we have been able to collect with these resources that we have. What we are looking to do in the future is to get more citizen involvement. One of those is the virtual cleanups, something that the county has done and has been successful. We'll ask people to go out into their community, their neighborhoods, and do a little cleanup for 15, 20 minutes, post it on a picture, and that way we can also utilize that to show success of keeping our city clean. Working with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, we're gonna, now that COVID is, and some of the requirements are lightening up, we're gonna start working with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful to reestablish some of the programs that they've had in the past and to help coordinate them. The Clean Cities Teams could actually help support some of the KBB events as well. And then our Clean Cities Ambassadors is a program that we're gonna work with KBB as well to get some Clean City ambassadors that will be responsible for all the wards or the various sections of the city that they can help gather their citizens' comments and reach out to the community and get feedback and then deliver it to the proper channels, our city coordinator, our Clean Cities Initiative Coordinator. Another thing we're working with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful is to enhance some of the improvements on the Kern River Parkway, our cleanups on the Kern River Parkway. We're gonna try to partner with them and enhance that program as well. There's a lot of litter and debris due to homelessness on the river channel, and we feel like we can team up with them and enhance their operation. So we're looking to meet with them and improve that process. So available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Thank you, Mr. Hewat. And I want to thank all of the volunteers who continue to help with the Clean City Initiative. We had over 100 people about a week and a half ago just come to help clean up downtown. And I'd like to charge every single citizen in our community to be a Clean City Ambassador. We need all of that. Colleagues, I've asked each of your appointees to follow up with you, your Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, to identify specific projects in your area. So they should be following up soon. First, we'll go to the public for comment and then return to council. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests? We have none, and so Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fidler, thank you so much for the presentation, and kudos to you and your entire team for the amazing effort here. You're certainly right, and this was one of the priorities that we established through Measure N, and it's important that we deliver to the community. Next to public safety and homelessness, this is a huge priority from all four corners of the city. And so I'm really happy. It feels like we're building a lot of momentum and really excited to hear about your next steps. So I really commend all of you and your team. And obviously, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful has been carrying this torch for a long time, so they all deserve a lot of credit as well. I have a couple of questions tonight regarding the app. So you mentioned when there's illegal dumping, citizens can report that using the app. Can they use the app to report a pickup? I understand that they can call a number for a bulky waste pickup. Let's say a person is moving from their apartment. Is there a convenient way for them to use the mobile app for them to pick up something that's not quite illegal? How do they do it legally?
We do have, through our Solid Waste Division, they have, through the internet and through the web, I'm not 100% sure if it's on the app. I believe it is, but I'll verify. I just can't say for positive. But they do have, through their phone and web, a request for pickup.
Okay.
And I forgot to mention, I'd be terrible if I didn't. Our Solid Waste Division really stepped up with this program because right now, they've took this on without the additional staff, and it's been a huge challenge. I know Greg Olivier really stepped up to the plate, planning all these pop-up, drop-off locations, and then James Leonard and his staff coordinating all the Clean Cities Teams. We have six teams, four with the Bakersfield Homeless Center and two with California Highway Adoptions. It's a lot of work each day to go through and coordinate those teams.
So that's my second question. We're running the pop-ups, I love that concept, another way for people to discard their bulky waste legally. You know, you cited northwest, southwest, northeast, southeast. I know we've done a few events already in downtown Bakersfield, but where does central Bakersfield lie in that?
So our two events that we've had in the northeast has been at the Mechanic Bank Arena.
Okay.
Our next event we're gonna be looking at is potentially putting a one out at our airport off of Union and Plans in that area. So we're trying to move them around through the city. The program is very new. We're trying to gain traction with it and get the community involved. So we kept the same locations for the first time to get people familiar with the program. And now we're gonna, now that they're familiar, we're gonna try to move it around a little bit and get more, more people that can participate in it.
That's great. And as we move forward, if we can have a map for our reference of where historically we've had these pop-ups, I'm very interested in some of the disadvantaged neighborhoods in East Bakersfield, for example, where people may not have the means to make it even to downtown Bakersfield. You know, finding a truck is very difficult. But maybe we have some micro-pop-up events within the neighborhood, and I'd like to ask if you look into that as well.
Definitely. We're looking for anywhere that we have space to put down the equipment. That's our biggest challenge. We've had, in one location, we had 800 vehicles show up within a four-hour period.
Incredible.
So we have to make sure that there is the space for the equipment and adequate space for the cars to get off the road so they don't become a danger to the program.
And my last comment is, or question is regarding the resources that we're providing to the community, are they provided in multi-language's other than English?
Yeah, I believe so. And Joe could probably help answer that, that where the programs that we're putting out, is it only in English? I'm sorry, it's only in English?
I'd like to ask if you can also provide materials in Spanish for a large portion of our community.
Yeah.
And citizenry, okay. And this final comment, you know, one of the focus areas for me in War II is the area between Kentucky and Flower Williams and Beale. And I've noticed a dramatic improvement in the alleyways there with regard to bulky waste. I mean, it looks great. And so I just want to commend you and your team again for all the hard work and getting on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, I thought it was important that the council, you know, hears about all your good works and that's why I referred for your presentation. So you did a bulk waste event at Kaiser Permanente and I noticed one of the signs, it's a portable sign, you put on a street corner and it said "Bulk Event," which was great, but I was wondering if we could have a little more descriptive because when you look at it, the bulk event, you know, they're selling TVs, you know, what are you doing? So on that signage, you know, bulk waste event, or just something that clues people in a little bit more about what the event is?
Yeah, thank you. Like you said, this is a learning curve. We are, we're getting a lot of positive feedback like that. My initial goal was to utilize maybe one of our changeable message signs that also helps promote it. So put out, we have the big changeable message signs that will end up, we can put some information, not, it's a changing sign, so we can add a little bit more information. But yeah, definitely we'll, we'll look at the little signs and see if we can add some more information as well.
Besides our social media, are we engaging with local media for PSAs to advertise this?
You know, we've had some input from them and Chris Huat and myself also did a Kern County in-depth program. They reached out to us and wanted information, but yeah, we're gonna try to work with the county as well as we develop out. We didn't, we have to kind of work into this. I don't want to hit too heavy as we're in a learning curve and then have it fail. So we're working into that and we will start to put a lot more social media, a lot more reaching out to the media and to promote these events.
Okay, I don't want to inundate staff while you're still spinning up.
Yeah.
But maybe Joe, not that I want to give you extra work here, Joe, but some of the morning shows before the bulk events, if maybe you can get on some of those and talk about what we're doing too. I was thinking quarterly, but maybe that's too often, maybe twice a year, if we could have a ward or city heat map of those hotspot areas so council members are aware really where those hotspots and where those app calls are being made in their areas so they have an idea, so they can maybe figure out a broader plan to be able to, you know, take care of a few things?
My goal is to let that, make that heat map go away.
Well, that'd be perfect. Well, again, thanks for all the hard work, Nick. Sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Freeman.
Nick, just a quick question. When you, on the teams and all the volunteers you get, it looked like a lot of young people were on those. Do our high schools still require a certain number of hours of community service and would they get credit for it if they signed up on your crews?
So the teams that we're utilizing right now are actually members of, are clients of the Bakersfield Homeless Center or employees of the California Highway Adoption Company. They are not volunteers for the Clean Cities Initiative Teams. And same thing with the Downtown Street Ambassadors, the Downtown Street Ambassadors or the Bakersfield Homeless Center. The Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Program, that's all volunteers and there's several age groups. There's a retirees group that does a significant amount of cleanup for KBB. We've had, you know, high schools that wanted to participate and they'll bring in groups of kids, you know, even employees from various businesses.
Well, anyway, if, if any city-sponsored cleanup teams use volunteers as opposed to pay, we ought to find out if the high schools still require community service because I'm sure you could attract a lot of them that way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Nick, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's exciting. I had told our city manager this little story on the way to work. My sales designer at Dreammaker had her little three-year-old in the car with her and he just started talking, he was a late talker, and on the way to work he said, "Mommy, Bakersfield dirty."
Yeah.
And she brought that to my attention and she says, "I think we know just the right person to talk to about that." So I'm really happy to see what's just happened in three months and I know it's a lot of work to ramp something like this up, but a question, just for public knowledge, because I asked it and I want to make sure I'm correct on this and then we get that word out, the 99 is just absolutely filthy. It's not a good image when people come into our city, but I understand, I could be wrong, so please correct me, that that is Caltrans responsibility to keep that cleaned up? It's not, I mean, our city initiative crews can't go out and do that?
You're correct.
Okay.
State Route 99 is a Caltrans facility, but we do work with Caltrans and Caltrans actually funds through us a cleanup, freeway litter cleanup program. We contract the Bakersfield Homeless Centers to go out and clean the freeways for Caltrans. They'll set up their own traffic control for them, but they funnel their funds through us and our program.
Okay.
They have committed additional resources and thanks to Mayor Go, who's been very proactive in this process, they are committing nearly $500,000 in additional funds for next fiscal year. They bumped up about another $50,000 to close out the rest of this year to increase the amount of pickups they have done. So Mayor Go has been very involved with Caltrans and letting them know that their facilities are not up to our standards and they are willing to work with us. Part of the issue with the 99 corridor is there's a lot of construction activity right now and the lanes are pushed to the outside, which makes it very difficult for the people to get out there and service it. So it is difficult, but they are doing it and they're trying to do it in a safe way. A lot of it will be around the interchanges where they can get in and there's plenty of space to work and reaching into those deeper areas. And they're also working with their contractors to clean up some of that as well. It's just very difficult access when it's in construction and there's, there's no real road work, room for them to park their vehicles and clean.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the frustration with our citizens is that they just don't know what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, they, why is it like this? Because they just don't know, they don't have the knowledge. So anyway, I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Arias.
Nick, thank you so much, and Christian, thank you so much as well for entertaining and getting a quick response out to all of my various referrals to the many hotspots in Ward One. This is a huge issue. I probably, I would say in the top three when I talk to constituents in my ward, so I really do appreciate you and your team, Nick, for all the work that you guys are doing here. One of the things that I want to remark on is that, and as you guys scale up to full capacity and build this thing out, is to, you know, and I know you guys do this already a little bit, is to just remind citizens and residents that this is only possible because of Measure N.
Yeah.
And without Measure N, we would not be able to do this. We would not be able to, you know, build out these programs and these teams, provide opportunities for folks at the Bakersfield Homeless Center and all of those wonderful things that are part of this program. So if there's any way to just keep in the back of your mind as we, maybe when we pull out one of those trailers, that that's part of the messaging. That's all I ask.
That's a great point. We are going to be putting labeling on the trucks for the Clean Cities Teams that will include that message, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Great work. I mean, this has been a topic of discussion since I got on the council and just really had started with the contracts with Kern Cog and the Homeless Center and stuff and we keep picking up more and more trash and people keep throwing out more and more trash. So I guess the, my comment would be, I mean, what are we doing towards education? How do we decrease the amount of thrown out? And Kevin Barnes mentioned to me way back when that a large portion, he felt, was, you know, blowing out of the back of pickup trucks. People throw something out there and they're gonna take it out later and it blows out before they take it out. And so, you know, education or developing, you know, a trash can in the back of truck program or something like that to cut down on the amount that we have to pick up.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, and through the chair, just a quick thought, we didn't have it for today because it was one of our later elements of the ramp-up, but Chris and Nick are working on an education and enforcement arm to this. It's gotta be a multi-pronged approach. We need to pick stuff up, but you know, if we pick it up too well, people maybe keep throwing those bulky waste items out there. And so we're looking at some options with BPD on hotspots and enforcement for illegal dumping. We're also working on that education side so we can do some information and PSAs and things about, you know, both, things like, you know, litter and debris that maybe people aren't realizing is happening, as well as just, you know, it's all of our responsibility to take care of our city and be that part of the message. And so we wanted to really push on getting these teams and pop-up events in place, but the next phase will have some enforcement and education components to it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. And KBB has been involved in working with education of the younger ones. Certainly this last year, that's been a challenge, but they're planning to move forward, so that'll be one aspect and then certainly we need to address the adults. Councilmember Gray?
No, I was gonna say the same thing.
All right, thank you very much and...
I think Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to receive and file.
Oh.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes. Mr. Fidler, I have used the pop-ups myself and it was really well-run at Mechanics, lot of people, and it went through quickly, so thank you.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you, and next item, please.
Also under Workshops, Item B, Presentation from Kern Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and council. By referral from council as well, we are just aware that there's a lot of constituent requests that have come through about what are we doing about the new invasive species of mosquitoes. And so we asked the Vector Control District to come and Mr. Terry Knight, Public Information Officer, is gonna provide a presentation and some information about what the mosquito and vector control district is doing and also we hope for our viewing public to pay attention to what they can do to help mitigate in their own homes.
Welcome.
Mayor Go, city councilmembers, Manager Christian Clegg. My name is Terry Knight. Excuse me, I am the Public Information Officer at Kern Mosquito and Vector Control and I'm here this evening to give a quick presentation to answer some questions as to what we do at Kern Mosquito and Vector Control, what is taking place, and to give some updates on the newly invasive 80s agyphty mosquitoes. So let me see if I can make this thing operate. Sorry about that. Just real quick, if I click this one time, will it just advance or do I have to roll it? Roll it, okay. Oh, all right. So often we get several questions, some are very vague, some are direct, but the questions that appear and take place quite often are some of these right here, like who are we? What do we do for the public? And why do we control mosquitoes? One question that comes up quite often is what is a vector? Well, a vector is anything that can transmit disease or pathogens to a human being. And our primary objective here at Kern Mosquito and Vector Control is to protect the public's health through effective mosquito control, virus surveillance, roof rat control, and public education. Why do we control mosquitoes? Well, primary reason, mosquitoes are vectors of disease and parasites. Some of the common diseases and parasites that we have right here in Kern County are West Nile virus. Another one is dog heartworm. Many people are unaware of that. Mosquitoes are a nuisance and cause discomfort to the public and many people do not know this, but more than 1 million people die each year because of mosquito-borne illnesses. On the map here, you will see four different colors. Kern Mosquito and Vector Control is highlighted in yellow. We manage 1,657 square miles here in Kern County. To the west is West Side Mosquito Abatement, to the north is Delano, and there's a small mosquito abatement district up around Lake Isabella that is South Fork Mosquito Abatement. Okay, here at Kern Mosquito and Vector Control, we now implement an integrated pest management system and the reason why we do this is so we don't have to solely rely on chemical control. It allows us to use other control methods, which have become very effective now, especially with the new 80s agyphty. And it also allows us to use surveillance to find out what's going on within our neighborhoods and communities. One example of the control methods that we use is biological control. Mosquito fish are very important to the district. We place these fish just about anywhere that we can. They're a wonderful tool. They help maintain several areas without having to use any chemical control at all. One of the chemicals that we do use, which is biological control, is Bacillus products, which is bacterial. It's completely harmless to water or anything that might be living in the water column other than mosquitoes or black fly larvae. Physical control is becoming extremely important now, especially within our cities with the addition of 80s agyphty. The removing of standing water, the constant reminder for people to remove unwanted items has become an utmost important item on our agenda. Cultural control is another very important item that has recently come to the forefront. That includes educating the public and that's by handing out brochures and trying to get people to change their habits and routines. Chemical control, is it necessary? Absolutely. We apply EPA-registered chemicals when necessary. The chemicals that we use are effective but have minimal residual effect and most of them have no residual effect, so they're very safe for the community and everyone around us. Surveillance is very important. It allows us to use these traps that are up here on the board to follow mosquitoes, to get an idea of where they're moving. They also give us an idea of what's going on as far as West Nile virus and also, excuse me, and also other viruses that may be appearing here in the community. Aerial pool surveillance has become very important. This allows us to pick up and detect green swimming pools in the area. It allows us to find these pools as well as treat and maintain our neighborhoods in a quick manner. Okay. West Nile virus transmission, I'll just go through this really quickly. West Nile is transmitted through birds. The, it's a revolving circle from bird to mosquito and back and forth. The mosquitoes can transmit the virus from the bird and also by a human or a horse. Quite often, especially within horses, if they have not been vaccinated, this can be fatal. Okay, some important dates at Kern Mosquito and Vector Control. In 2004, we had West Nile virus appear here in Kern County. In 2007, we had 148 humans infected here within our district. We were the epicenter here in California. In 2014, this is a very important year because that was the first year 80s agyphty mosquitoes were first detected and that took place in Arvin, California. Something strange took place in 2015 and that was the reappearance of St. Louis encephalitis virus. It had been dormant since 2004. Okay, in 2018, 80s agyphty mosquitoes were located and trapped in the city of Bakersfield. They were only trapped in six different areas. We weren't really alarmed at that point in time, but in 2020, wow, that summed it up. 80s agyphty... 80s Agyphty had completely spread throughout the majority of the city of Bakersfield. It helped generate 3,942 service requests. That is a lot of work for any mosquito abatement district. And to just give you an idea, the prior year, there was only 790. So, is 80s Agyphty here and thriving? The answer to that question is yes. Okay, there are 26 species here of mosquitoes here in Kern County. Three of these are considered a major concern due to either disease factors or public nuisance. On the left is an example of 80s Agyphty. On the right is an example of Culex tarsalis. Okay, some similarities and differences between 80s Agyphty and Culex, I'll just go through these really quickly. On the left, 80s Agyphty prefer an urban environment. They prefer being around homes. They are happy being around homes, and you will not find them out in rural environments. They are vector of several viruses, and the thing that everybody needs to pay attention to here, they primarily feed on human beings, so they are extremely happy around our urban environments. Another thing to pay attention to is they feed primarily during the day, which is unusual for mosquitoes. They lay eggs singly, and they also lay them in several locations. These eggs can also lay dormant for up to two years without water. Many people are asking us, including myself, Terry, are these mosquitoes going to go away? I'd like to be optimistic this evening, but the answer to that question is no, and that is the reason. 80s Agyphty are very hardy. They have been around, the species have been around for millions of years, and this is one reason. They are very aggressive and elusive, and they will also bite a person multiple times before obtaining a blood mill. Culex tarsalis on the right, I'll just go through those real quick. They will breed in both urban and rural environments. They are vectors of disease, including West Nile virus and St. Louis encephalitis. They primarily feed on birds, but they will bite humans. They lay eggs together at one location and all at one time, and they are less aggressive mosquito than 80s Agyphty. Okay, I'll just let you just look at the mosquito lifecycle really quickly. Something you want to pay attention to is both these species of these mosquitoes will go from egg to adult in about five to seven days if the weather conditions are optimum. Okay, this photograph or slide right here says it all. These are common 80s Agyphty breeding sources. As you can see, all of these sources will be found in backyards, front yards, around schoolyards, but they are all urban sources. Many of these are very small in nature. The kiddie pool and the kids' toys and stuff up here, that's something that's really being neglected. Potted plants with the water saucers underneath, city, or the yard drains in homes are being, are a major problem. They're in almost all the neighborhood homes. The third item to the right is a flooded irrigation valve box. So, many of these items are quite common. They are generating the majority of the mosquitoes that are troubling neighbors and the people that are making the complaints. Okay, common Culex sources within city environments, just go through these. You have two green swimming pools, one on the left and in the middle. These have both been neglected and will require maintenance by us in order to remove the mosquitoes. The ornamental fish ponds, these are good examples of where mosquito fish can thrive and multiply and also maintain a water source within our urban environments. City storm drains, we treat thousands of these each month. Many of these breed thousands of mosquitoes if not treated properly. Some other sources within our cities are city sumps. On your left shows an example of one that is extremely weedy and woolly. Occasionally, we'll run into flooded things that are larger in size like flooded boats. You have agricultural sources. These sources here, either like the water trough on the upper left, can be maintained with mosquito fish. But many of these, the larger sources in the agricultural and rural environments, these require chemicals in order to maintain mosquito populations. Here's an example of a cornfield that's being sprayed on the left. On the right, this is something that's really given us problems over the last years. This is a wastewater leach field. The water is coming from one of the carrot industries, or I'm sorry, the carrot-producing plants here in Kern County. Okay, something that everybody needs to pay attention to, especially regarding 80s Agyphty mosquitoes, ways to protect yourself. Okay, you can wear light clothing. Prefer, or I always recommend somebody where, to wear long-sleeve shirts, long pants, as where as, I'm sorry, as well as shoes and socks. These mosquitoes prefer to bite below the kneecaps and around the feet. Make sure your window screens, your door screens are in good working, or in good order, and also sealed tightly around the frames. And probably the most important thing I can recommend for all homeowners is please wear, when needed, an EPA-registered insect repellent. And I've highlighted the DEET repellent up here because it is the most effective. This is the question part of it. I want to thank Manager Christian Clegg. We got to have a meet and greet here a few weeks ago. He was very interested in what we were doing. Also, he asked if there was anything that the city might do to be able to come more, or to become involved. And we had talked about, years ago, the district worked with the city, and they put a wrap on one of the buses that was a reminder about West Nile virus. Christian and I had the opportunity to talk about a few different things regarding 80s Agyphty because it is becoming such a major nuisance, and it will be a nuisance again once this year. COVID-19 really put a damper on our education and public information opportunities last year. We were turned away due to the COVID-19 in many of the businesses, places that we were trying to make contact with the public. This year, we're going to switch gears. I hope that all the council members received the information packets that I gave to the city clerk. It's going to give you an idea of what we are going to do. We're going to hit the ground running, and we're going to start handing these information packets and brochures and information cards out to the public, probably in the middle of April, as soon as it starts to warm up. We're going to have media events to remind the public. We're probably going to have four of those this year. Last year, I think we only had two. So, we're going to be proactive, but the most important thing is the public really, really needs to do their part. And I mentioned the control efforts that come about that are so important. Cultural control and physical control. Almost 90% of 80s Agyphty mosquitoes breeding here in our community can be removed by the public. It doesn't, will, it does not require any chemicals. All they have to do is locate the water, police their own backyard, and be diligent on a constant basis, and they can help themselves. I want to thank everybody for allowing me to come here and share my message tonight. Are there any questions from the council members?
Thank you, Mr. Knight. We'll go to the public first. Madam Clerk, did we receive any comments, requests?
Mayor, we did not receive any public speaker cards. However, I did want to mention that we received a staff memorandum regarding this item, transmitting written material submitted by Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm one of the council members that requested this item, and I thank you so much for coming before us. It was very informative. In my youth, I lived for a while and spent a lot of time in Florida, and in Florida, in backyards, and we don't have it here, because we've been so fortunate in California and Bakersfield that we just don't have the insect population to dictate the large screen enclosures that they have in Florida for patios. And if you've ever seen them in Florida, the whole pool is enclosed, you know, prevent mosquitoes and being able to enjoy your backyard. And I hope we don't get to that point because this is something that's never happened to us before. I know personally from my own backyard, it was unbearable. And when you talk about wearing, you know, long sleeve and long pants and stuff when it's 112 degrees out, it's, you know, it's difficult to do that. On your aerial surveillance for pools, how often you do that program?
That's a good question. We do that twice a year. We will be doing the first surveillance or the first round probably in about two weeks. That's usually, early in the year, usually depends on the weather. But if everything goes well, the first aerial surveillance photos will be taken probably in about two weeks. We will receive that information back usually about two weeks after that, and then we'll start to download the photos, and then they'll be handed out to the area foreman.
Okay, do you partner with our code enforcement or anything enforcement efforts? Or what's the enforcement mechanism that you use?
We have, we have occasionally had to use code enforcement. We actually have our own warrants now that we use. We have been granted, excuse me, we've been granted a warrant from the county of Kern to go ahead and do what we need to get into homes within reason. So, we've been pretty fortunate that we've been able to get into most of these homes without having to use any type of code enforcement.
Right, the backyards.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
What about localized spraying within the city proper? Is that being done at all, or is it just education and...
No, we, we maintain, excuse me, we maintain the public waterways. That would be, an example was the city storm drains, city curb water. We maintain the city storms, or the drainage sumps. So, the, the city property and county property is being maintained by us. The public property is, is being maintained as we receive, or receive service requests. So, as far as the public property goes, yes, we have maintained those, the water sources for many, many years.
Just to clarify, so the city sumps, you partner with the city on those?
Yes.
Okay, what about the drains? You mentioned the drains, too?
We, yeah, we work with the city. We have had some situations, well, last year is an example. The really good thing that I'd like to compliment the city with, they are very good about working with us, both. You brought up storm drains. If we have a storm drain issue, they're usually very diligent about getting in there and either doing maintenance or whatever to get those drains flowing. City sumps, they are very good about doing maintenance to make sure that we can get in and maintain those sumps. A lot of times, we'll have washouts and stuff due to broken water lines or whatever. So, yes, we do work with the city as needed, but for the most part, the mosquito abatement is in our hands until, until we do need any type of maintenance to be done.
Now, I don't know how many sumps we have in the city, but I'm sure it's a lot of them. Is it as needed, like you said, or, because it's a while before most of the sumps dry out, you know, when the warm weather comes, so you're going to have that stagnant water even though temperatures are starting to creep up, and I'm sure it's manifesting mosquitoes? Or is it a proactive approach where, you know, we're going out and just, you know, doing a blanket approach on, across the board on the sumps?
We have, I want to say eight time, or eight full-time foremen. We also have, the areas are broken up into different areas. We have seasonal employees that will come in. They'll be here starting April 19th. So, I hope I can answer your question. Those city and county sumps, they are being inspected and checked on a regular rotation and basis.
Okay. Well, I chair a committee within California Department, California Department of Public Health, Vector-Borne Disease Section, and I know it's a very difficult job that you do, especially countywide, but, you know, we're going to have to just get better at dealing with the 80s mosquito. Christian, on our face page, if we could have, as we start going into the season, maybe, you know, something, as soon as it pops up, as far as tools and methods, be able to eradicate mosquitoes in your own yard and how to deal with that?
If I may, Councilmember, and through the chair, that's a great point, and one of the, I think the biggest benefits of this referral is that we've connected our two public information officers, and we've asked Joe to work with Terry to make sure any education we can gets out on all our outlets.
Thank you. Again, thank you so much for your presentation and coming.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry, I was nervous this evening.
No, you did great.
Anyways, I, and I'll never sit over there underneath unless I'm wearing a jacket. Anyways, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for your time, and thank you for everything that you do for our wonderful city. Christian, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, don't run off yet.
I apologize.
A few questions. If a homeowner has a problem, they call you, you come out and kind of say, hey, this is your problem, you're doing this, this, and this, and you need to fix it, or how does that work?
We, we do, our services are always free of charge. If a person has a problem, yes, they can call us. They can call us throughout the day. We also have a updated website where they can go ahead and make a service request via our website. But yes, we will do, our primary function is to do an inspection, especially with the 80s Agyphty mosquitoes. Is what we're trying to do is, first of all, try to educate the public, show them where the mosquitoes are coming from and why. So, if we can do that, we've eliminated possibly a further service request from coming from that homeowner. At that time, we also give the small information cards that, hopefully that you have, to that homeowner, and we ask them to pass those out to their neighbors. So, little by little, is what we're trying to do is spread the information and educate these neighborhoods and these neighbors as quickly as possible. We do get returned service requests, and it's what we're trying to do at this point, is we're trying to avoid that. Like I said, 80s Agyphty has pretty much spread throughout the entire community of Bakersfield. As soon as it warms up, we will see the wrath of this mosquito again. It's very, it's very elusive, and it is extremely aggressive. Are we going to be busy? Yes. Are we going to hit the ground running in a different manner this year and try to get the information out to people, to educate them, and try to teach them how to get rid of their own mosquitoes? That's one of our major priorities right now. Like I said, we got almost 4,000 service requests last year, and to receive that or more puts a serious strain on any mosquito abatement district.
What is the season?
Our season, our seasonal employees will be here on the 19th of April, and depending on the weather conditions, they usually will, they usually leave probably around the third week of October. So, we are, we're active within the community year-round. So, in the wintertime, the mosquitoes usually don't show a whole lot of activity. Occasionally, we'll get a report of a green swimming pool. We do, excuse me, we do check and maintain the city sumps throughout the wintertime. We also check city curb water. But during the wintertime, like I said, the mosquito activity is almost minimal, so it's based on weather patterns. As the weather warms up, the more active the mosquitoes become. So, usually from about mid-April to about the second week of November is the primary mosquito season. Unfortunately, it doesn't cool down here in Kern County usually till about Thanksgiving, so as soon as we see the first cooling off, it usually tapers off.
Do you also inspect all the city siphons where water just stands all the time?
Like the city storm drains?
Well, it's a storm drain, but it takes water in one side, and it just sits, and then it goes out the other side of the street.
Yes.
It's not connected to a main storm drain, it's just a siphon.
We, we call those, they're like a French drain. Basically, they're a transfer basin. Yes, yes, we treat those every month. We treat those with a product that has a residual... We treat those with a product that has a residual product. It's a, it's a, it's a biological, so it's safe. But it does have a residual effect, and the idea is for that product to maintain within those basins for 28 days. A lot of times with the, with the French drains, you have, you have a flushing of water. So you're not really getting, you're not really getting the material to work properly like we want to. So when, when we have areas like that, those are considered our hotspots. So our city, our city crews mark those down, and a lot of times, we will probably go back to those, if not weekly, at least bi-weekly.
Your fish don't work in those?
Occasionally, but usually you have a situation in there with either pollutants or road oils, whatever it might be. Not very often do the fish survive in, in a storm drain or a French drain, no.
I've, I've read about where they, I think it was in Florida, where, you know, they genetically modified some of the species, and they mated, and then they became sterile, and that was one way they tried to get rid of it. Have you looked into that, or is that something growing in the industry or not?
Yeah. It is something that's in the works. There are companies that are looking into producing sterile males for release. It involves a bacterial product called Wolbachia. And I don't know all the details, but I know the mosquitoes are treated with a special bacteria which will sterilize them. It's very effective, but it's also generating some animosity within the public because people are saying, why are you releasing mosquitoes into the public? My gosh, don't we have enough already? So with, without the true understanding, some people really don't understand what's taking place. Some people get upset when we go out in the late evenings and cold fog for adult mosquitoes. So it creates some animosity there. A lot of that is just people not understanding what's going on. Last year with COVID-19, we had a few people chase down our trucks wanting to know what we were doing. One person even accused us of spraying COVID-19 in the air. They were, they were sure that we were poisoning our communities. So like I said, there's a really big factor that takes place in mosquito abatement, and it includes the public. But education is going to be a really big factor, not just this year, from now on. Like I said, the eighties egypti mosquito is here to stay, but everyone needs to understand that we can reduce this mosquito to where it's not noticeable, but it takes a community effort, and that takes neighborhoods working together, homeowners doing their part, and that means doing their part on a regular basis. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
I have a very quick question. The traps that we saw, can the, can the individuals purchase traps like that to put in their yards? Just yes or no?
You can purchase traps, yes. The answer is yes, you can purchase traps. The, the traps probably would not be exactly like the ones that you saw on there. Those are, those are built by us. They're modified out of different things, like ice cream containers. They're, we, we've actually modified fans that actually create vacu, or vacuum systems and stuff. So to get, to get those exact traps, I would have to say no. But you can buy mosquito traps. Some of them are effective. I won't mention any names because I've been asked not to do that, but, because I don't want to single anybody out, or.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Manufacturer, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Knight, for your presentation.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And we'd like to take a five-minute break, so let's come back at 7:50. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Appointments, Item A, three at-large appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission due to the March 30, 2021 term expirations of Kathy Butler, Stephen Montgomery, and Susan B. Stussy. We have received applications for appointment from Stephen Montgomery, Kathy Ann Butler, and Susan Stussy. We also received and provided a staff memorandum transmitting additional correspondence from Stephen Montgomery.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. As the city clerk provides ballots to the council, I'd like to clarify the voting process for you. Although the council will use ballots, the outcome of the vote will not be made public by the clerk. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding each appointment. Following the council meeting, the individual ballots will be available for public review in the city clerk's office.
Madam Mayor, this first ballot is for the first seat.
So you're just going to have one vote?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, is it possible for us just to make a motion for all three?
Yes, I think.
Oh, it is now?
Thank you, yes.
Oh, I asked you about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. There's only three applicants, and so, yes, if you could just do that, that would be wonderful.
Yes. Okay, I had asked about that earlier, but I was advised that we could not.
Thank you, Mayor.
So thank you, I'm glad. Do we have a motion? Vice Mayor?
I'm, I move we appoint the three candidates.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Appointment of three alternate committee members for wards two, four, and six to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to the December 2020 term expiration of Sophia Felix, alternate for Ward Six, and the resignation of Norma Jean Jackson, alternate for Ward Two, and Nathan Meeks, alternate for Ward Four.
Thank you. These appointments are by ward, therefore no ballots required. I'll call on the council members from Ward Two, Four, and Six for nominations of the, of their committee members. And if you would just state your nomination and state it as a motion two. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to nominate and appoint Zachariah Garcia as the Ward Two alternate.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Sophia Felix as the alternate for Ward Four.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. And Councilmember Gray.
I'd like to make a vote. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Althea or Bonnie Gillette Turner for the alternate.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously, unanimously approved.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Felix, and Ms. Turner for your willingness to serve. Next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AH for approval. We received a staff memorandum regarding item 8C, transmitting staff's response to a conversation with a constituent regarding the matter. And two additional staff memorandums were received regarding item 8M, one transmitting a notice of exemption and a related resolution connected to the California Environmental Quality Act, and the second transmitting correspondence received.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have no conflicts or items to remove except my own, so I move to approve items 8A through 8AH with the exception of 8K.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. And now Vice Mayor for 8K, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to send item 8K to Ledge and Lit for, for committee comments and, and action.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearings.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under the consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearing portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 9A through 9B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. Seeing none. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearing? I see none. So at this time, consent calendar public hearing items 9A and 9B are now closed. Vice Mayor?
I move approval of item 9A and 9B.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Under deferred business. Item A, solid waste division recycling program presentation. Number one, purchase and sale agreement with Bakersfield ARC. Number two, agreement with Bark for Labor Services. And number three, another agreement with Bark for Labor Services. Number four, appropriate $3 million cost of Bark property.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll ask Mr. Nick Fiddler to provide a presentation.
Madam Clerk, can you please bring up the presentation? And while she's doing that, I'd like to also thank Zach Meyer and Greg Olivier, who are here in the meeting with us, for doing such due diligence on preparing this presentation and preparing all the background information for this program. So going back a couple, last two council meetings ago, we discussed some of the challenges that we've been having with the, our recycling program. And as the city has continued to strive to be one of the lowest refuse rates in the state, the recycling program is having an impact on our rates. Solid Waste Division continues to see a reserve decrease due to recycling challenges that we discussed at our last or couple council meetings ago. SB 1383 will also increase the level of service required by the Solid Waste Division, increasing operation costs. It's more critical now than ever to take advantage of opportunities to reduce costs to the Solid Waste Division. So background, again, February 17th, city council meeting, staff gave a presentation updating council on solid waste division recycling program. Staff showed recycling challenges that are currently increasing operational costs. And again, that was going back to China Sword and the implementation of not accepting recycling worldwide. China used to be the recycle 60% of the world's recycling material. They banned all import of outside materials, which caused a worldwide collapse, collapse of the recycling. So again, staff showed these challenges and currently increasing costs. One solution proposed at the February 17th council meeting was to acquire Bark, Bakersfield ARC's Bark property, own and operate a materials recovery facility, which we can call a MRF, to reduce those operational costs. By a vote of five to two, council approved staff to submit a letter of interest to Bark and to negotiate a sales price. Staff also, I mean, council also asked staff to explore different alternatives. As part of that request, staff did go out and explore four different alternatives. The first alternative was to build a MRF, a material recovery facility on vacant land. That would be a new facility. Alternative two is to contract with a local MRF. Alternative three is to contract with an outside MRF. And alternative four is what we discussed at our February 17th meeting, is to purchase the Bark property. So looking at alternative one, we went through and did a bare-bones construction estimate for what it would take to actually build a new MRF. And this is not a conservative cost. This is, if, you know, we are trying to compare apples to apples as best as we can, and it has made some very, let's say, trying to find equipment that is used to bring the cost down. We looked, we found a used MRF, which you see on that line item, is $750,000, and then relocate and install that, and try to find a used baler, which we had found. So the price, obviously, this is the rock bottom price that we could build a, a MRF for on a new piece of property. So alternative ones, this assumes a purchase of a MRF and a baler that is used, which I discussed just previously. And then, so the pros of, of building our own MRF is we can design the facility to fit the city's current and future needs, and overall, it would be a newer facility. The cons is there's an upfront capital cost, which is higher. It would take time to design and construct. We're looking at a minimum of a two-year period to actually get this process, to go through the design, environmental, and then construction process. Construction costs continue to escalate, and the current estimate is 4.5 million. And like I mentioned before, that is based off of a current assumption of equipment that is available now that's used. Not sure if that equipment would be available any year from now when we actually would go to start construction after the design, environmental phase. And it does not include items such as bins, forklifts, and loaders that would be necessary to operate that facility. That's just the facility itself. So alternative two, contract with the local MRF, Metropolitan Recycling LLC, what we call MRC, operates a MRF next to our green waste facility, which is out there off of Mount Vernon. MRC currently processes half of the city's blue recycling materials. And MRC currently charges the city $90 per ton for clean material and $125 per ton for dirty material to process the blue cart recycling. Question is, what's dirty and what's clean? Some of the areas of the community obviously might have a cleaner recycling, and then some areas have a little bit dirtier. When we talk about dirty, they end up putting in more trash, which should actually go into the brown can. Instead, they put it in the blue can, so it contaminates the, the whole load. So there, there's a lot more effort in cleaning those, that recycling than it would for someone that has more of a clean load. So alternative two, still continue the pros, we wouldn't have to capitalize on new infrastructure. MRC already has established working relationship with the city. You know, currently, they're accepting, currently, they're taking all of the recycling facility because they're the only one available. But in the past, they've typically taken 50% of the city's materials. The cons is currently, MRC is currently the only MRF in Bakersfield. This alternative would limit. This alternative would limit the overall capacity and limit comparative analysis and advantages. Historically, cities sent to two different MRFs. Obviously, you guys are aware that Bark used to provide the other facility prior to them having to shut down their operations due to various reasons. And then the current rates are higher than rates experienced during city pilot program and higher rates than anticipated with other alternatives. Rates could also fluctuate over time with limited mitigation options. Another con is we would also be putting all of our eggs in one basket, per se. You know, these MRFs, there's a lot of times that there's a potential that there's a down system, which they won't be able to process the materials. Or there could be some sort of accident that might put that out of operation. So having only one facility in the city would leave us without another option down the road. So alternative three, contract with outside MRF. Cagliari Environmental operates a MRF in Fresno. Staff reached out to them and they provided us information that they would process our material at a rate of not to exceed $50 per ton. However, the hauling rates to get the materials from Bakersfield to Fresno is approximately $50 per ton. We did try to work out some scenarios that we can try to bring those costs down and they were willing to work with us because we have the green waste facility and they have a food waste product that we could potentially backhaul some of the food waste products to dispose of in our green waste facility. Because we do a lot of the school programs and some various commercial programs where we process food waste through our green waste facility. And that would save about $10 per ton. So, you know, it'd end up costing us a net of about $90 per ton to haul and process those materials. There is an additional operating cost that would be, you know, associated with processing the materials in the green waste facility. But until we really started that program, we wouldn't know what those were. Oh, I'm sorry, I went backwards. Okay, sorry about that. And then alternative con, alternative three is the continuing the pros and cons with contracting with outside MRF. This would create redundancy, give the city another outlet for processing recycled materials. Costs comparative to the local MRF rates, once you consider the hauling costs. We could be lower overall depending on the hauling operations if we do work out some sort of program for backhauling. Newer technology is used at this facility, so that means it's, they can produce a higher diversion rate. These are, this is a very new facility. It's state of the art. Our cons is we would have to haul the materials outside the city. And then the hauling costs could fluctuate with the cost of fuel. Fuel costs go up, our hauling costs would go up accordingly. And then again, the rates could fluctuate over time. That, similar to with our local MRF, the rates will fluctuate based off of recycled materials recovered. So as the value of cardboard or aluminum or plastic goes down, our costs could go up. So and then alternative four is what we hit home pretty hard on the February 17th. Per council's direction, staff negotiated a purchase price with Bark for the 6.9 acres of property and which includes their full MRF operations and equipment. The purchase price is $3 million is what we negotiated. Purchase would include the sort line, which is obviously the equipment, the sort the materials, balers, bins, trailers, forklifts, and loaders. So it is a fully functional MRF that we wouldn't have to go out and buy additional equipment to make it start. We can, day one, we can turnkey and go in and start operating again. It includes trucks, scales, and scale house and a 2,800 square foot office building with restrooms and training rooms and offices. The Bark MRF expense and revenues. Purchase of the property would be through an interfund loan. Utilities, supplies, equipments, parts, and vendor services were derived from the pilot program and the results. The projected revenue also was derived from the pilot results. All material has been sold now from the pilot program. As part of the estimate, we included Bark O and M and Bark labor expenses were provided by Bark. So when we talk about Bark O and M, we're talking about them maintaining the equipment because they've been maintaining the equipment in the past, so they know what's needed to keep those pieces of equipment operating. And then also providing some janitorial and ground services for that facility, which they've been doing in the past. Oh, sorry, I'm back. Went a little bit too fast. Okay, and then staff developed the CIP, city labor and fleet costs. So total property continued, total cost and revenue to operate the program. I know at the last meeting, we indicated 3.7 million dollar savings, but we went back and did the most conservative estimate that we can think of. There's a couple items that we missed and I'll share with you in upcoming slides. But we did this out of our 10-year program. You can see years one, two, and three. And then we truncated years four through 10. And you can see at year two, we put in a $1 million capital improvement program. And that's in an effort to add some pieces of equipment to the system to bring up our recyclable recoverables up to 50%. And I'll get into that a little bit later as well. But we're seeing that the price per ton, after we do go through all the purchase price of the property and incorporating all the operating costs, it's costing the city about $40, $41 per ton to operate over that 10-year period. So 10-year net cost difference between our operating Bark MRF versus outsourcing materials is 3.4. Again, I mentioned that the past council meeting, we mentioned 3.7. Reasons for the difference, we had labor and maintenance costs were based off a pilot program. When we worked with Bark to establish the pilot program, we were doing it, initiated under a department agreement. And they, and to get the length of the program, they reduced some of their labor costs so we can fit it into maximizing that program. And then Bark also maintained the grounds for free. We didn't take that into consideration when we did the original estimate. Unfortunately, it didn't even come across our mind because Bark was actually maintaining the whole property. They owned a significant piece of property on Union Avenue and it was just incorporated into their overall maintenance. But separating this out, we did not have that in there. But what we are doing is we're including that into, Bark would still maintain that. We would contract Bark to perform those grounds maintenances and then also the janitorial services for the buildings that we're working on and the maintenance of the equipment. So that was all reflected in the new model that you saw earlier. And then staff's model was very conservative. As the comparison rates for most of the pilot program, we were paying $110 a ton. It wasn't until January that the price per ton was lowered to $90 a ton. During our model, we assumed the $90 a ton. So really, we tried to be really conservative with our estimates based on what it is current today. But the whole pilot program was basically at $110 per ton.
And I apologize, Nick, for interrupting, but that last bullet, those were the rates for MRC during the pilot, correct?
That's correct. Sorry, yes. So I mentioned an interfund loan to purchase the Bark property. Staff proposes to an interfund loan from the Sewer Enterprise Fund to the Refuse Enterprise Fund's capital improvement budget. The loan would be for $3 million and the payback period would be for 10 years at 1.5% interest. Randy McKeegan, our finance director, is here and if there's any questions in regards to that, at the end, he can help provide explanations. Randy indicated that the 1.5% is competitive and comparable to other funding opportunities. The Sewer Enterprise Fund has a healthy reserve where Refuse Enterprise Fund has been declining due to the impacts, not only from the recycling program, but also from the woodchip disposal cost. As most of you are aware and have been here on the council long enough, our woodchips have, we've had an issue with woodchips once they started closing down all the code gens. We used to send all of our woodchips to Delano. There was a code gen on Delano right off the 99. They would pay us approximately $11 a ton to take the woodchips. They would actually come pick them up and take them. Now we're paying anywhere from $9 to $11 a ton to truck them off. So this has had a big impact to our refuse fund along with the same thing with the recycling program. We are starting to see a turnaround in the woodchips, so there is some good news. We're starting to see some more outlets for the woodchips. But we just don't have anything steady at this point. And we're also looking at other options for the woodchips as well. It's another program that we're exploring and working with potential vendors on. City labor for Bark. I know I, there was a question last time that said, are we going to have any city staff? I failed to mention that we do have two city staff because they operate, two cities, two maintenance workers that are operating equipment because Bark does not provide that type of personnel. And then we have a clerk typist who is document control. They also weigh in all the trucks and document it and also all the invoices for selling the materials. City staff salaries, benefits, and pensions would come from the Refuse Enterprise Fund. This would be no impact to the general fund. I know there were some questions of what an enterprise fund is. So this, the Solid Waste Division is a, almost like its own separate business. It is self-supported. It does not rely on any general fund whatsoever, even for its employees, even for their retirement of the employees. The refuse fund covers any unfunded balances for the retirement, CalPERS, whatever may be. That is completely paid for through the rate program. And is, like I said, it's its own separate business. So the Bark labor for the MRF, material sorting staff would be contracted through Bark. There's 12 Bark employees, nine workers, and three coaches. The three coaches actually work side by side with the workers. So we're actually getting 12 people, but they are monitoring and guiding the workers alongside them. Staff proposes two labor agreements with Bark. One for a short-term agreement for labor services during the escrow period, if the city does purchase the property. That labor agreement would terminate once escrow closes or if it falls out of escrow. And then one long-term agreement that would begin after escrow closes. And that agreement would last for two years. But then the long-term agreement would be renewable per council consent annually thereafter for up to a 10 years total. Bark MRF CIPs, I mentioned, the staff is proposing a $1 million project in year two to purchase and install a cardboard screen and glass screen and magnet to remove material. Again, that's to increase our recoveries and reduce the amount of hand labor that would be required to get to that area or that level of recovery. Staff anticipates the materials recovered to increase to 45 from 30%, which actually is a 50% increase in materials recovered by weight. Staff conservatively projects a 25% increase in revenue, but it all is likely that will be greater. So the more material recovered, the more revenue we receive in sold materials. These upgrades should also reduce Bark labor costs to stay conservative. Staff didn't project any of these savings into our estimates. Staff submitted a two-year capital improvement, two additional capital improvement programs, projects. One in year six at $80,000 to rehabilitate the baler and then one at year seven to perform miscellaneous equipment repairs. Obviously, there's a lot of wear and tear on this equipment, so it, you know, will need some routine maintenance. Bark MRF details. So there's a couple extra components that were, are provided through the Bark purchase. Bark did have a debottling equipment and program. They actually have a program where a lot of the food vendor or drink beverage vendors, they bring their spoiled bottles to them and they run this through the machines and it debottles them. And then the, we can capture the recovered bottles and cans through that process. And then also Bark had client, existing client list that those clients have said that they would continue to provide through if the city did purchase it. And staff has been also approached by other outside private industries that, once they found out that we were looking at purchasing Bark to do some of the similar services. One of the services is the paper shredding companies. You know, they have a significant amount of office paper that they've shredded. They would bring that materials to Bark and they would bail it for them, sell it. And then Bark would recover their operation fees and then a portion of the sales. Additional factors to consider with Bark MRF. Currently, there is a used sorting line from another MRF for sale. This sorting line has, or MRF has unfortunately closed due to the economy. The MRF is now for sale. It's at a very reduced price. That can recover 50% of the recycled materials and would cost less than $1 million to purchase, relocate, and install. This is, as staff were reviewing all options, they ended up finding this opportunity. So we could install a year earlier, increasing revenue and reducing labor costs by year two instead of year three. These are something that we can consider as we move forward and get into operation. And then by purchasing Bark MRF, city haulers and, city and haulers would each be responsible for processing 50% of the recycled materials. This would mirror our current arrangement for trash collections. We would, they would, they would continue to take all the residential and commercial communities that they are currently taking. They would, they would take all the recycling from those residents and businesses to their facility. And everything that we collect on our routes would be taken to the Bark facility. Bark property purchase pros and cons. Pros, lower upfront capital costs than alternate one. Also, a quicker startup time than alternate one. For a 10-year period, the city would save 3. million versus alternate two. City would own the Bark property after 10 years, which would have a value of 10, $3 million, which is not factored into the model. So basically, at the end of 10 years, we'd have a $3 million plus asset to the, within the refuse fund. And then the cons would be we'd need to borrow money from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. And then small staffing increase and additional solid waste responsibilities. So staff recommendation. After staff's review of all alternatives, the following is recommended. Approve purchase of sale agreement for the city to acquire Bark's property along with their MRF and additional equipment. Approve both short and long-term labor agreements with Bark to staff the MRF sorting line. Approve the interfund loan from the Sewer Enterprise Fund to the Refuse Enterprise Fund's capital improvement budget. Fund's capital improvement budget for the purchase of the BARK's property. And then the option to further explore the purchase of the MRF to implement improvements sooner to increase recovery rates. Again, when I, when I mentioned that, that's that, that used MRF that is available now, which I'm not sure it'll be available in two years from now. So that's something that staff would still like to pursue. We just couldn't mix that into all that, what we're doing with the program now.
If I may just clarify for that last bullet, it's equipment from a used MRF as opposed to the property or facility itself?
I apologize. Mr. Clegg is correct. That is a sort line from a MRF facility, not, not the MRF facility itself. So the sort line would be include a cardboard screen, a glass screen, a magnet and then some of the conveyor belt systems. So available for any questions you may have. And I have staff here as well. I have Zach Meyer and Greg Olivier. They both were very instrumental in putting this together. Greg, as I mentioned before, has a significant background in operating MRFs from his previous positions.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Councilmember Gonzalez is...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fidler, for your presentation today and, and great job to your team for this really diligent presentation. Thank you, Zach, Greg, Randy, for all your help with, with presenting this. This is actually a model presentation for future council actions in my, my mind. The fact that you provided all these alternatives and then listed the pros and cons very clearly and succinctly is, is a good model for future considerations. Just a couple of quick comments. You know, I think it's really important that the public understands this is regarding the Refuge Fund and not the general fund, so I'm glad you made that point. I love the idea that there's, there are opportunities for future revenue, exploring other options. I think that's a great, great opportunity there. And then the fact that we will own the property and have a $3 million asset is also a win, something that, that we can celebrate and I think it's a prudent, prudent move. And so I still continue to support staff's recommendation. And with that, I'd like to move approval of all agreements and approval of the interfund loan.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Nick. That was an excellent presentation and I think you answered the questions that we had at the last meeting that we reviewed all this. I would like to repeat, you know, we're, we're counting land as, as an expense instead of an asset. The savings is really 3 million more in your presentation than it says. That land I've called around is worth more than 3 million is land, not even counting. So if the equipment costs 4 million, too, to reproduce, we have, I mean, the land gets allocated negative 200, I mean, or is the land 3 million and the equipment's free? The numbers are, are pretty overwhelming on the savings. Not to mention it's largely driven by a $48 tipping fee that the haulers have to pay and we don't if we keep in the city in this location. So that these numbers hold true. I mean, this one is, is a fairly easy one. However, I would like to add, if Councilman Gonzalez would allow, add something to the motion, which is that staff is to present annually a, a financial report. This format would be excellent since it's what we're proving it on. So let's say in this format of actuals versus the, this will be the budget that you gave us to find out, did we do exactly what we said we would do? I think it's important for us to have confidence in your numbers and let's see what happened at the end of, you know, of the irrelevant year. So that's one addition, financial report, the end of each year. And second, that at the end of two years, which happens to be the expiration of the BARK contract, that council reviews whether the city should continue to operate this or whether we should let our other third parties bid against us to operate it. I don't know why they would want to. I don't think they could do it cheaper, but if someone comes along and says, no, we can operate that cheaper than you can. We own the asset. So there, I think we should, you know, open that up if anybody wants to. So with that, I will support the motion if, if that's agreeable.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I'm more than happy to amend my motion to include both provisions. One, that, that staff provide a financial report annually at the end of each fiscal year and also that at the end of two years, that the council reviews whether the city should continue its operations.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I have a question maybe that doesn't really apply to whether we purchase this or not, but, and I don't expect it to be answered tonight, but I'm curious as to why we have such an excess in one fund that we can loan that money and subsidize this program? And if you could get back to me on that, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you, Nick, for the hard work that your staff has done and put in, put into this project and tried to show different scenarios and options that the city would have. But I have a different perspective and my perspective hasn't changed. So I think for the public, they need to be able to hear from a different perspective. So with the present capacity at BARK of 30%, we know the city will need to invest in new equipment to get to the 70% needed that we had talked about a month ago. Some monies you've figured in to your budget.
Councilmember Gray, your mic is not on.
Yeah, it is on.
They can't hear it.
Oh, they can't hear it?
There we go.
Oh, I had it too far for me. So with the present capacity, capacity at BARK of 30%, the city will need to invest in new equipment to get to the 70% needed and we all agreed upon that. Some monies have been figured in, but as some experts have warned, there could be more of an investment needed to fulfill other state requirements such as this SB 1383 and other, you're already saying that there's other things that need to happen here that you need, you would, you would want to invest in. Another assumption that concerns me is that we will have the advantage of lower-cost labor over decades to come through BARK to replace hiring city employees with retirement benefits and so forth. So my view, my perspective is to look more long-term than just looking in a year ahead or two years ahead. I do like the motion that came out to review this, but I don't want to be shortsighted that when I'm gone, that we've saddled the city, the taxpayers. And then yesterday I talked with the city manager and he was very good about getting some numbers from you for me. And I asked him to find out through staff the cost savings to the average rate payer. We're trying to save money for our rate pairs in Bakersfield if that's what I understood one of the objection, one of the, our goals were in the beginning. And when I was told that the average household rate payer, they're going to save $3.38 a year. That even more convinced me that the risk to the city outweighs the benefits to the rate payer, if we're only looking at that. So I don't feel that it's prudent for the city to go into the recycling business with an uncertain future, that we could be forced to make a bigger investment than originally planned and possibly be forced to hire city employees that are going to cost the city a lot of money for decades to come, way beyond when we're still sitting here. So I believe that government should govern whenever possible, I mean, and, and when, and that we should be governing and whenever possible, we should stay out of business that's better suited for private enterprise. I think as a conservative, I want to continually talk about private enterprise instead of government intervention. So therefore, to protect our taxpayers now or in the future, I will have to vote no against this.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Parlier.
Thanks, Mayor. So Nick, when you said the, the goal between the MRC and the city, 50% each, the split, correct?
Yep.
And Bruce brought it up where we don't have to pay tipping fees and they do. And I know last time we talked about this, I asked that staff go to bat and see if we could get those reduced. And I just want to reiterate that again, that we go to bat for our haulers, that we're another voice to try and augment, correction, deflect those tipping cost fees. So we're a little more apples to apples when we're comparing things. Thank you.
And I follow up on that. We, staff did meet with MRC to try to figure out ways to accomplish that and we gave them a couple of ideas, which they're looking at and reviewing.
Good. If we can keep that, I sure appreciate it, Nick. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. I agree with Councilmember Freeman. It, it really looks to me like it's a, you know, $6.4 million savings because you end up with the asset at the end, so that's substantial. And also the, the BARK employees that we're hiring, I mean, we feel very good about putting the homeless people to work and getting them back in the community. The BARK employees, explain to me who they are.
So BARK is, Bakersfield ARC is, is challenged employees that, that we work with, or they work with to give them a job and training skills. So they are handicapped in some sort and they, they help train and rehabilitate and give them jobs placements.
Right. I, I think that's an important aspect of this program also, that we're helping, those people have jobs, more of those jobs. So I am for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Mayor, go. Before I open the vote, I did want to announce that a staff memorandum was received regarding this item correcting the address of the BARK property to 2260 South Union Avenue and modifying the term of agreement referenced under item 12A number three.
Thank you.
Motion is approved with council, with Vice Mayor Weir and Councilmember Gray voting no.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Fidler. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Parlier.
Well, it's a little late in the day, but Happy St. Patty's Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two referrals to make. The first one, I think, is certainly more urgent given the timeline of it, but it has to do with the American Rescue Plan and the funding that the city is projected to receive from the federal government as a result of that last stimulus that they just passed. I did a little bit of research and I think I talked with you, Christian, just a little bit about it, but through my reading of the bill, there's an eligible use for, potentially using it for broadband services in, in localities and, and cities throughout the country. And so I would just like to politely ask that staff do some research and, and check into that and see if there's any opportunity for us to, to do that. Obviously, given that every parent that I know is, it's at the top of their mind that, you know, COVID has been a serious burden on their students and it has been an incredible challenge to their learning process and, and adapting at home in terms of equipment. But then also for those families who maybe don't have access to wifi or a stable wifi, going to school buses throughout the city to try and download those documents is, is a real hassle and a burden. So would just love for, for us to get ahead of that and see if there's any opportunities for us to work with that and, and partner with entities that make sense. Would love for that to happen. The second thing is that I would like to make a referral to the Budget and Finance Committee to kind of talk through, from a high-level perspective, how it is that we're leveraging local dollars, whether that's PSVS or the general budget dollars, to go after some of the state and, and federal grants and private investment as well, to really address infrastructure and transportation projects in the downtown area, greater downtown, but also specifically in our disadvantaged communities. I would love for staff to bring that back so that we can have a further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Any other requests to speak?
Seeing none. We hit a major milestone today in COVID and today we lost, marks the day that we have exceeded 1,000 lives lost in our community. So I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the memory of those lives that were lost and we're adjourned at 8:44.